Now, uh, we will, we will hear, uh, positives and negatives on this. Uh, we'll hold it down, you know, for just a few minutes because we've got to move on with the regular council meeting. Uh, we won't make a decision tonight. We will just hear, uh, your concerns, your thoughts and concerns about this. But, uh, I'll open it up now, uh, in an orderly manner, uh, to, to hear from y'all on the positive or negative on this. Yeah, there's, there's some maps here. Sam has provided some maps on the, on the table if anyone wants to come up and look at it. Uh, basically what we're doing is, is turning this, this property back to the landowners on each side of it. So that, what is it, sixteen foot?
One of them's fifteen and one of them's twenty.
One of them's fifteen, twenty, okay. So this piece of property is running behind houses, uh, behind, uh, business. Uh, it will be just turned back to that landowner, so. All right?
I'm from the Hicks subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
I'm in favor of leaving it like it is.
Okay.
And everybody that I've talked to in the subdivision says they'd rather leave it like it is.
Okay.
Do I need to say anymore?
Mayor asks, fine.
Well, we designated that alley for everybody to use in their co-op. See, they got a electric line down through there and they have to change them transformers and they have to work on the lines. I'd like to keep it for them also. If you come in, then see the line is right on the, on the line there.
Is there, is there lines in the center of the ride, of that alleyway?
It's right on the edge of it, it's right at the back of my lot there.
Mm-hmm.
It's right on the line where my line comes to and it's... One time they built my, uh, transformer at the back and they come down, down Hick Street there, come down that alley there, changed it and they worked on the line there a time or two and I'd like to, like to keep it.
You saying that it's better for them to come down the alleyway and work on transformers than it is for them to drive the heavy trucks through the yard?
They need that alley.
I'm, I'm one of the other owners, uh, I think it's a lot, uh, seven.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight, something. And there's a transformer on a pole right, right there at the back of our yard. And if they didn't have that alleyway, the only other way to get to it would be to come through my yard in a heavy truck. I've had heavy trucks through my yard before and it will ruin the yard. Mm-hmm. I mean, because I have a lot, a lot of water runoff from highway. It runs off from seventy-five through the trench between the flooring and place and the cabinet store and runs right through my yard and it builds a pond almost in my lower right-hand side. And the ground stays extremely soft in about seventy-five percent of my yard. And especially with heavy rains like today. And if that alleyway's not there, then they would wind up getting tow trucks to pull heavy vehicles out of my yard and it would ruin it. You know, so they, the, and if you vacate the alleyway, then some people might, you know, decide to build a fence back there for, you know, animals or kids or whatever. They'd say, well, I have a right to do so. But then again, you know, the other people would like to have the right to keep that alleyway open for people to work on the transformer so it wouldn't have to come through their yard.
Yeah, the utilities has a right of way through there anyway, don't you, Mayor?
Yes.
Utilities already have a right of way through there anyway.
Okay, but, but.
But now, I mean, you know, if, if you, if we give it back to them, uh, you know, somebody could build a building over, close to the line, somebody could put a fence on the line. Uh, you know, it'd be chopped up, you know, that alleyway would be, if you give it back to them. But, you know, this was all brought up to us from different people about wanting that piece of property for their own, you know, to use and so.
I, I mean.
You know, I mean, it was actually giving you more property.
Nobody's gonna turn, nobody's gonna turn down more property. I mean, I, you know, I'd like to have.
Yeah, well, that's what, that's what this was all about, is just turning that property back to you and then you could do what you wanted to, you could have a garden on it or you could put a building on it.
Yeah. It works more to, to have that added there than I keep saying that it is a little property.
Well, that, that's totally up to y'all on what y'all decide.
So they left, I built a garage area at the back and facing the alley and I keep my pickup in there and I'm gonna need some gas for my load mowers and things. I'd use that alley up near Hick Street and I need it.
But you still need it now.
And I designated that alley, I worked hard for that property and I designated for, to be used for all of us.
Yeah. Okay.
Mayor, is this a majority group or is this a us group?
It's, I mean, we're gonna hear their opinions and.
That's what I'm saying, how many houses are on there?
One.
There's seven houses.
Seven houses?
On that side of the street off of Malcolm. And that doesn't count, you know, what's on seventy-five as far as.
And I built a lot of dirt.
And the carpet place, Alpha Insurance. The rest of Mr. Hicks's property.
Drive all the way across my yard and her apartment shrubber to get out of there.
He just break, somebody's gonna close up his way of getting out.
Is that a way?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I consider that.
If there's a right of way there, does, if Electric Co-op has a right of way, can't they make you keep it open? The right of way?
Yeah, they can.
I know TBA does.
Yeah, you, you have to, you have to leave it open.
So nobody could build anything or put a fence up to block it without putting a gate there, but.
Anybody else got anything to say about it?
What, what was your name, sir? What's your name?
Your name.
Kevin G.
And which lots do you own? Which lots do you own?
Which lots?
Nine and ten. That's in the, that's in the residential now.
Yes, sir. And what was your name, sorry?
Byron Marshall.
It's, uh, um, well, it's mine and my mama's property.
Yeah, it's, it's hers and her mama's property.
Okay, how's it listed?
Bonnie Croft and Sharon Marshall.
And it's, uh, seven and eight, ain't it, Bert?
Yes.
Seven, nine, it's really good things there.
I'm sorry, it's six and seven.
Six and seven.
And I talked to them down through there and the majority of them said that they appreciate it to leave it like it is.
Yeah.
And it ain't costing nothing. We keep it up, we keep it nice. They don't ever have to spend nobody's there. And I, I done a little better than that. From Alpha Insurance out Hick Street, I put in some church and big rally when we first done this. And I've done a solid foundation there for them trucks to come in there and work on my lines. I went to extra trouble and I worked hard for that property and I don't appreciate giving it away. Well, I went for all of us to use.
Okay.
Especially for our utility people.
Yes.
I don't want them going across my yard.
Oh, well, why not?
I designated that alley there to take care of all of that.
All right, anybody else?
Also, if y'all do this, I have, um, block, uh, block, excuse me, block one and two of block eleven. Excuse me, lot twelve of block two. And block twelve, lot twelve of block two. Eleven, twelve of block two. And if you do this, are we gonna have to get new property deeds? Or are they gonna be amended?
We would do no deeds for the property's description.
Yeah.
Pardon? We would do no deeds for the property's description.
There won't be any cost to you on this.
I just said leave it like it is.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, even though, even though my name's not on the MEMS, I'm in favor of it. I don't know how come my, I'm not, you know, and my wife are not listed. And I don't know if it just goes back further than, than we've owned the property or whatever, but I, I'm in favor of it.
Now, that's in the MEMS subdivision up here.
Could you say your name and.
Kevin Citi Block.
Kevin and Cindy?
Yes, ma'am.
And what lot do you own?
I'll have to look.
On the road.
He's at the corner of Church and.
Church and.
Church and Jackson.
Jackson, Jackson.
Jackson, he's on that D-grade residence parcel.
Does it have the lot? She don't have it on either.
I was gonna say, for anybody watching, I know a lot of people watch it. The city is not taking anybody's property. We were giving back property. So if there was any confusion, we were giving property at no charge. And so that was what this is all about. You know, this was some alleyways, we were giving them back to the people or, you know, thought trying to, whatever. But I just wanted to clear that up if there was any confusion.
Yes, um, I have a lot here that's bonded to things. Lot eight, block two, CA three. You said that the deed would be taken care of by the city, okay? How much did this thing cost, lawyer fees and everything, the city, to send this out?
I couldn't tell you all.
You didn't know about it? Okay, how much would it cost the city to change the deeds, all the deeds?
It'll cost, it'll cost something. This, this was, this was started, this was started like three years ago.
Okay, well.
This is just, just to finish it up of what they started a long time ago.
Yeah, I noticed this little document here says something about the, the city wouldn't have to maintain these alleys. And I've never seen them maintain the alley, I've been there over ten years. We've been taking care of these alleys.
Well, in some parts of town, that's right. In some parts, we've had to go in there and cut trees and, and it's hard to get in there to get the trees because people build fences down through there and so it, it's hard for us to get in there and get that stuff out.
Some of the trees that fell through buildings and then they won't, the city will take care of their buildings and cut the trees and this and that. Yes, we do, our hats off to y'all because y'all's alley.
Yeah.
If that was how I like it, we'd never have this conversation because y'all do do a great job.
And you're right for looking at the money on that.
Yeah.
I'll look, I'll look at money, brother. But yeah, I'll write give and take. If we're having to go back and like, like what they were saying about the trade falling on the building, if that happens, you know, several times, you could pay a lawyer to fix this, you know. That's how we're looking at it.
Okay, well, I have, we have a, what, twenty-foot alley I assume of this. Yeah, on the back of my property and I get probably ten foot. There's no way I'm gonna take my chain-linked fence and have it moved ten sticking feet. I don't need the property and maybe somebody else has to have it. But I know I don't and I don't want the city going to a lot of expense getting rid of this alley.
Well, on your particular part down through there, if enough people don't want it, then hey, we won't do it.
Okay, that's all I have to say.
What is your name?
We don't, we didn't really hear, you know, either way.
Lot eight, block two.
Uh, can I ask a question to the city attorney? Uh, how do we get out of the liability part of that ones that want to keep that?
Well, I think there could be, you can vacate the alley to a certain spot. I mean, you know, if you had enough people along a certain part of it, you could vacate it to there and then if you had people that were in agreement that they didn't want their part vacated, but I think it's gonna have to be a line, you know, a straight line. You can't vacate part of it and then leave it in other places because it's gonna be chopped up and blocked off and so, um.
What we're actually trying to do is actually get out of liability because we have spent money in other areas and we don't, you know, if it's a trade goes across your building, then it's our property, it's our alley and you're gonna hold us accountable. We're just gonna out, run of the liability part of it.
Okay, you use our, to keep our block like it is?
Well, it's possible. You know, we'll just have to look at it and see, like the mayor said, and see how many wants to do that and how many don't.
But you shouldn't have any liability for a month.
Well, we've spent money in other areas and that's what we're trying to get out of.
We wasn't trying to like, you know, we thought we were doing, you know, a good thing. But, you know, if, if y'all really want, you know, I'm, if somehow we were to give land, I know we just talked about it, you know, I would take it. But if y'all think it's better the other way, then, you know, that's something, Nick, you can look into it and maybe we can, if y'all willing to accept the liability.
In, in some areas, there's trees grown on it and trees die, they fall on buildings. Uh, they want us to clean the tree up, they want us to fix the building back, so we've, we've become responsible for it. And that's where this, this is all coming from. And so, you know, if everybody's got their own piece of property and they're responsible for it, it takes a little bit of burden off of us, you know, to try to keep all that cleaned up, which we don't even use, so it's, it's, it's kind of property that we don't really need anyway, so.
He wasn't real concerned.
Well, let's talk, yes, ma'am?
Um, if one subdivision wants theirs left alone, but another one would like to change, you don't all have to do it the same way?
No, you don't.
No, we can vote on them individually.
Yeah, and we, and we, we all have to vote on them individually anyway, yes.
We've always kept ours moving, it's like it was our lot, you know.
Most people do, yeah.
You know, just kept moving. There's only been one problem. We had a large pine tree in our backyard I had to have removed. And, uh, the other trees, I don't think they're grass or, you know, hurt anything. But, uh, it's mostly grass.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, and, and we just wanna, like, if, if you wanted to build a building on it or something, you could, you know, I have to give it back to you. So, so that's, that's totally, we're just, we're just kind of getting a, a feel for what people wants to do tonight and then we'll move forward maybe at the next meeting or the next one and, uh, and either not give it back or give it back.
Can I say something, Mayor?
Yes.
I, I'm just curious from her as well, um, who, who's in favor of doing this? Can I get?
You, you, we need to go by different subdivisions.
Different subdivisions.
Yes, yes.
Separate alleys.
They are and they owns us.
Everybody that spoke up so far is in that one Hicks subdivision.
In the one Hicks.
Yeah, and then these, these over here are for it, but they're in the MEMS subdivision.
They're in a different subdivision.
And who, sitting by Mr. Black, who are you all?
Billy and Patricia Edmonds. Ours is listed as D-grade, uh, one of our lot and then all the way from our lot to, to Jackson Street is still listed as D-grade, but it's, you know, it hasn't been owned by them in a long time.
And it should be how? Edmonds, E-D-M-O-N-D-S.
I was just trying to.
Does the utilities go through up there in the alleyway?
There's only one transformer, I think, uh, that, that, there's three houses on the transformer inside. Uh, are you familiar with the Glad Hills?
Yes.
We're, we're directly behind Lee and Glad Hill and there's one transformer right there on the corner of my lot on the alleyway. But they always back down her driveway to get to if they need to change it or change a pole or anything. They always.
Well, I remember that up there, I used to wear the Kevlar off it, I had to find most of it.
Okay, there's only one.
Wasn't much way to get a truck.
There's only one, uh, one pole right there that they, you know.
Anybody else on the MEMS wants to say anything? Is it just two that we're talking about tonight?
No, it's also the, um.
Bowman First Avenue.
Bowman subdivision.
First, First Avenue, there, close to First Avenue?
No, that'd be Clifton.
Yeah.
Should be one of the Clifton subdivision. By fact, I had one behind my house on the way to our First Avenue. It's all broken up trees. That's where we had to spend some money.
Is it Bowman's? Tell us where that's at.
Where Bowman is at?
Clifton's in there.
No, he said it's Bowman.
It's between Harrison Street. And it's between, uh, First Avenue and Second Avenue. It runs from Harrison Street to Norman.
So that's what you're saying, you're saying vote.
E-O-W-E-N-T-Y.
See, and you're talking something else.
Always been called Clifton, that's reason, that's.
There is a subdivision over there adjacent to this Clifton, there's two subdivisions.
That's one up behind more ice, but.
This is, this is the alleyway between Browning and Bowman Lane, that's where it's at. It's the houses is backed up off of those two streets. Anybody here on those, on that one? The ones that, houses are off Browning and Bowman. Nobody? So y'all's are off Hicks and.
Mel's.
Malcom. Wallace.
And Wallace, George Wallace.
Where's this Browning line?
Go out thirty-five, turn about, in, between the entrance company and the bank there and go down to those apartments where you have to make a right turn, cross the creek, then, uh.
Run out.
Then, once you cross the creek, it's a street that turns right. That's the east side of Bowman subdivision, it'd be back three blocks, headed back toward thirty-five. Gentleman that used to work for the city mills over there.
Lindell, Flannan.
No, well, he did too. You talking about weed?
Talking about the guy that has trees that falls over.
Yes. Anybody else want to say anything about this piece of property?
Just a comment on, on the Hicks.
Yeah.
Um, Charlie Glover, I love him, and I'm not sure what slots they are, but I would have no problem with, but we need to define leaving as is what is is. In other words, to release the, the city from being liable for damage maybe, but not to be responsible to build an alley which would be a street connecting Hicks and George Wallace, to take up that space, but to, uh, you know, to leave as is, like it's been, I don't know what you would grandfather in, whatever the word would be, to, to not disturb what's going on now. To satisfy Mr. Hicks and different ones maybe to, to define what is is. But, but for the city to not be responsible to, but in other words, if I wanted to enforce on a street, since it's an alley, you know, uh, what would be my legal grounds? You know, if, if that was the case, but that's not the case. I'm just saying, rather than giving it back to the property owners, which I have no problem either way, won't affect me one bit, I'm more concerned about the residential people, you know, and respecting coming across their property. But, you know, define the is, in other words, where there's not got to be a street for the city to have to maintain and leave it just a access for utilities. You know, and maybe release the, the city from the liability that it would be. But, you know, that's a lot of expense to, to change these deeds for that piece of property. But could they legally put a building in that area would be a question, if it's not deeded back to the people?
If, if it's not deeded back, I don't think you can.
I think it's either an alley or it belongs to these people. I don't think there's any middle ground to it.
Right. And that's why I'm saying, like Mr. Hicks is saying, leave it as is, meaning the way it's been and the way it presents itself right now. There's no street, but normally an alley would require a street. Is that correct?
No, I mean, there are alleys all over DeKalb County that are just.
I know, but if I wanted to say I want a street through there, could I enforce that? A road connecting the two for that alley to be accessible? You know, that's what I'm saying is that, I know like Fort Pine, you got places that have alleys that are paved roads to access through, you know. That would, I think, most would oppose to that, you know, not wanting a street in their backyard. But the, my, my concern is, is if you leave it as an alley, then what is the future? Uh, protection, if, if, if someone wants a street through there, is the city, if it's not given back to the people and it's left as an alley, then would it be guaranteed to leave it like it is? In other words, not put a road through there?
What Charlie's asking is if I own property beside him and it leaves us that alleyway, can I make a road through there?
Y'all, if my neighbors sells and somebody wants a road back there through that alley, can that be done?
It could be.
Yeah.
And, and, and it's, and, and there's some cases of that, uh, right here in town where you've got businesses that's close and you got an alleyway between them, then, then to keep that up for those businesses. They went in there and paved those little alleyways to, uh, to make them better.
Right.
And later on, now I'm not saying this is gonna happen in the next year or two or, or it might be twenty or thirty years, you know, but that may develop down there enough one of these days that it has to be paved, that, an alleyway has to be fixed, you know, running behind those houses. I mean, I'm not saying it will or it won't, but we don't really know what's gonna hold in that part of, on out in the future, you know, of, of what businesses are gonna come in down there or whatever, you know. Because a lot of that land down through there is, uh, in that commercial law, isn't it?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, anything five hundred feet from the center of the road is commercial, therefore goes all the way to Michael. So all that would be classified as commercial, technically, I think. So that's an argument there about residential and commercial, but let's don't go there.
No.
It's don't muddy the water.
Let's don't start that.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, you know, my concern is the technical definition of what an alley should supply and what is the city's responsibility to create a road through there, which most alleys are that way. And, uh, you know, I might have said a whole lot and said nothing, but I'm just trying to define what is is.
How's your plan?
Well, that's, that's a hell for it is, you know, it is.
Well, I think what happened about years ago, when these subdivision stuff had been built, they put these alleyways in there because there wasn't any foresight to look at the future of what the one-armed bandit sanitation department is.
Yeah.
They put those alleyways in there that where they can run them through with a garbage truck and actually take care of both sides of them, up through the middle of those alleyways to where they can put the trash in the old back loader.
Right.
Now, that wouldn't be beneficial to the city because the armed bandit has to have a lot more room to reach out and grab the can and dump the garbage. So that, that's one of the main reasons that those were put in there.
Right, well, and, and you wouldn't want to have to do that on seventy-five, that's dangerous. For that, but all that property is commercial. You know, so the, the, all the residential is available from Malcom, you know, so. But anyway, the bottom line being, I, I have no argument about either way. But the, the thing is, is, you know, the security of, or the lack of liability that the city would have and I can understand that. But, uh, you know, if it's left like it is, or is that a concern? If, if it's left like it is, then to release the city from being liable for damages, you know, if there was such. That's, I think that's another issue of concern. But, uh, but anyway, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to explain what is, what Mr. Hicks, I believe, I've talked to him about it. And not to, not jeopardize, not to allow him not to have that liberty to go in and out. But, you know, the, if it's left alone like it is, then there's not a, I don't have a problem with that myself, but these residential folks probably have more benefits if they want to speak about getting that back to that property. So define is.
There you go, there you go. Okay.
When do we vote on this, Mayor?
It'll be the next meeting or the next one, whenever we come up with it. Uh, she, she's still gotta contact a few more people and, uh, let's make sure what we're, you know, what direction we're gonna go in.
Yeah, let's make sure we don't miss.
We're gonna have like another, does this see it on the call, is this, there gonna be another?
Now, we'll, we'll, we'll do another one. We'll, we'll have another, I'd, I'd like to have, since we got so much going on with it, I'd like to have another just hearing.
Yes.
And then that night, whatever we, whatever we come out of it, then we will, uh, vote that night.
Would you be safe to say that our next council meeting can have everyone kind of take it? Would you be safe to say that our next council meeting can have everyone contacted?
I would think so. There are just three that I know of that I haven't made contact with. Now, some of them may be that the property's been sold and my information may have been old on the people that own the lots. So if anybody knows of that being the case, let me know, because I wanna make sure I have the most recent landowner, the current landowner. So if you all get with me after this is over, then I'll make sure I've got your information.
Our, our next council meeting is the nineteenth. And I think if we're gonna have a public hearing, we're gonna have to run that in the paper again.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that we need to push this out to, uh, and I hate to do it, but on the fourth of July, but the third of July. That'll give us, that'll give us a few more weeks. We'll have another hearing that night. We'll vote on it that night and be done with it, so. Yes, sir.
Uh, I got one more little question. Are, are you the lawyer for the, for this project?
Yes, sir.
Do you not know how much this costs?
Um, well, I kept up with my time when I worked on it and I don't know off the top of my head. No, I don't.
Okay. I just wanted to know.
I'd encourage anybody, just got anybody living in that area, talk to them, tell them when the, when the hearing's gonna be. Like I opinion, comment, or, you know, let it be.
Okay, we'll get into the regular council. We'll go, come out of the, uh, the public hearing and go into the regular council meeting at this time. Uh, how about roll call?
Here.
Byron. Freeman. Lawson.
Here.
Okay, uh, everybody's here. We've got two sets of minutes that need to be approved. I knew that.
I make a motion to accept minutes after this.
All right, we have a motion to accept the regular minutes of the past meeting. A second on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we got us. Okay, then we've got a, um, a set of minutes that goes with the public hearing, the public hearing before. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? As Harris, you can carry us. I'm gonna give this ordinance questions. I got ordinance here that's pertaining to the, uh, uh, to reappointing some directors to the, uh, Educational Building Authority. And this is mostly for Comerstone. We had to, uh, to do a, a, a Educational Building Authority for Comerstone a few years ago, and, uh, a couple of their directors, uh, needs to be reappointed. And it's Jonathan Andrews and Gary Evans will be reappointed to that, uh, board. So, uh, this ordinance, uh, will have to have a roll call vote to, uh, to make it, uh, official. So if somebody will make the motion.
I make your motion, Mayor.
Uh, it needs to be through sus- suspend the rules for immediate consideration of an ordinance.
I second. I make the motion, we just suspend the rules for immediate consideration of an ordinance.
Okay, all right. I'll do a roll call vote. Lawson? Freeman?
Yes.
Uh, Byron?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
And I say yes to it. Okay, now then to, uh, officially, uh, adopt this ordinance, uh, I need a motion for that.
What's the number? Is that number on the ordinance?
It is, uh... What is it, the? Six, nine?
I make a motion, we accept ordinance six, five, seventeen, eight.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to accept this ordinance, all, uh, in a second. Have to do a roll call vote again. Lawson?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Byron?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
And me, yes. We have one missing. All right, now then the second thing I have is, uh, uh, municipal water pollution prevention. Uh, it's a resolution and it is, uh, six dash five dash two thousand seventeen B. Uh, need someone to make a motion to accept that. This is coming from our wastewater treatment plant. We have to do this every year.
I make a motion, we accept resolution six, five, twenty seventeen B.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept resolution, uh, six, five, uh, two thousand seventeen B. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, uh, this next resolution is pertaining to, uh, uh, we're doing some, uh, repaving of some streets. This is to, uh, uh, put us, uh, in compliance with everything that the state wants us to do. Uh, the guidelines that they go by and the contract with them from the state for this. Uh, this is, uh, six dash oh five dash two thousand seventeen A, a resolution between us and the, uh, state. And it gives me the authorization to sign the contracts for the state, for this project.
I make add into motion, wouldn't it be safe since we've done, done any make?
Well, one of the ordinance in these two are resolutions. So this is a, resolution A.
I make a motion, we accept. Six, zero, five, twenty seventeen A.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, um... Okay, one of the things that I have here is, uh, we send people to, uh, uh, to training a lot. Sometimes we send them with a credit card. Uh, we're wanting to do that a little bit different by doing per diem. And, and what, what we're looking at is, uh, doing fifteen dollars per meal, uh, or three meals per day for forty-five dollars. And, and what that'll be is, uh, that way we know how much they have, you know, and, uh, if something comes back on credit card and it's a little bit high, we, we don't have to complain about it or whatever. We know what they're getting up, up front. We have a little bit of control of it. So I would, um, recommend that we set that per diem at forty-five dollars a day when they're off at school and trips like that, so.
I make a motion, we make per diem forty-five dollars a day.
I second.
Okay, all right, we have a motion in a second to set per diem at forty-five dollars a day. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, one other thing that goes along with travel, if somebody, and we, we don't have to make a motion on this, I just explained it. But if somebody does want to, you know, we don't have a vehicle from the drive, then we have a, got a guideline in our, um, handbook that states what the price is per mile.
Per mile.
If they drive, so. We have got that in there. Oh. Okay, uh, we have a, uh, resignation of, uh, uh, Jamie Chapman as a police officer. And, uh, so bringing that to you, if somebody wants to make a motion to accept that.
I make a motion, we accept, uh, Mr. Chapman's resignation from the police department, thank you.
Have a motion in a second to accept his resignation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now then, we're gonna turn around and hire a police officer in his place. His name is Josh Hunter. So if somebody...
I make a motion, we hire Josh Hunter as a patrolman.
Okay, all right, we have a motion in a second to hire Josh Hunter as a patrolman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, here comes the...
I think everyone else wanna bring this one up, Mayor.
Do you?
Yeah.
All right, okay, uh, my recommendation is to hire Luke Yarborough as a part-time animal control officer. This is something we've never had in the city of Ransville. Uh, so we're fixing to have one now and he's gonna be working on, uh, helping with this, uh, issue of these animals, so.
Good to hear. He's at work.
No, he's at work now, okay?
I'll put that in form of motion, we hire Luke Yarborough, part-time, twelve feet per hour, for animal control, thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Has he been, will he be trying? Has he been trying?
He is, uh, he, he works for, uh, like the police department, so that's now is a dispatcher and he's already, he's a reserve officer. Uh, and he is, uh, gonna be trained. He's gonna work with standard, be a train.
Okay.
Okay, uh, got two more hires, uh, gonna be the part-time positions. Uh, Steve Davis is a part-time sanitation driver.
I make a motion, we hire Steve Davis as a part-time sanitation driver.
Mayor, I'm second to that motion, but that'd be, uh, sanitation slash, uh, mauler.
Yeah, got you, got you, okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we're gonna hire... All right, y'all ready? Okay, we're gonna hire Michael, uh, Peter, uh, Peterson, uh, as a part-time sanitation driver. We took on some more routes and, uh, with these other routes, it takes a, a few more people, especially during vacation time and, and all that to be able to run all these routes that we've got, so.
I make a motion, we do that, Mayor, you know, and both of these guys have city Ls to where they're qualified, to where they can drive the sanitation trucks as well.
All right. They'll be working doing other part, other departments too. They won't just, just be drivers. So I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, for... I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Byron. He's got a couple, three things, so.
Oh, Mayor, you've, uh, done pretty much took care of the one, uh...
Sorry. Well, it's on my list, I just kept going.
We can need to hard, we need to buy a saw. We're renting a saw, we're, we're cutting streets and putting new tile on the roads and we are not going to put any more paving down until we get all the tiles checked because we done two up on, uh, Hillback, uh, and it was three sections of tile on that one road. What happens, those things get to wash and it comes apart and then the road starts caving in. So we're fixing to, we've rented this saw several times.
It's sixty-five dollars an hour too, so it's cheaper.
Nine dollars a saw, yeah. So instead of keep paying nine dollars a pile, we're gonna purchase one for twenty-three hundred dollars to where we can have it, do what we need to do, what we need to replace the oil. We can cut the street, put it back and get the proper compaction on it. So I put that in form of motion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to buy, uh, an asphalt concrete saw that approximately twenty-three hundred dollars. Have a motion in a second for that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Other thing I have that sounds with tonight on some city streets that he has to bring to us, to bring the recommendation to them about accepting animals, you will do those now, so.
Y'all ready? We ready.
Okay, I hear this statement.
I'm with you.
We have looked at, uh, a couple of streets in the subdivisions. One of them is the Orchard. It's located up behind Foodland, uh, back in there, it's Little Garden Homes, Mr. Jim Whittingham. That subdivision was, uh, developed approximately ten years ago. It's one of the most nicest streets in the town. It has sidewalks, curb and gutter, a coal site out at the end, and there's, uh, five or six garden homes in there. And, uh, I know they're planning on being one more. So, uh, and we do have fifty foot wide way, uh, and, and the road was, it does have asphalt pavement. It's got great drainage and, uh, I recommend, uh, that the city accept that street. And the name of the subdivision is the Orchard Phase One. Gala Street runs east and west, uh, in that subdivision. Coming into the subdivision off of Ranch Road, Ranch Road is the road beside Foodland, is Brandon Avenue. And I understand part of Brandon Avenue has possibly been taken in before. It's down through the subdivision. But if it hasn't, it all needs to go in. Brandon comes in the subdivision, comes down toward Gala, turns left and goes ahead about a hundred feet and dead ends back there at the Board of Education's property, back in behind the, uh, material system up there, so.
So let me, so you recommend we go ahead and accept Gala Street?
Okay.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion for that, Mayor.
Okay.
And also Brandon now.
Take that in a second.
It's in the same subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's, let's just do it in a second.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept Gala Street in the, uh, in the Orchard subdivision. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, now on that, Brandon, uh, that goes down to Gala, so that's like the first phase of Brandon. Is that right? So we need to accept that first phase.
Yeah, you need to accept Brandon from where it intersects, uh, Ranch Road down. It goes on past that and dead ends about a hundred, uh, hundred fifty feet or so. It's just dead ends.
Is there particular place, is that around the planet there?
No, it's, uh, it's the road that turns to go out to into Orchard.
See up here, it's drainage. This road runs south.
I make a motion, we accept Brandon Street.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept Brandon Street out to where it dead ends now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Now, the other one?
The other one is in, uh, subdivision called Maple Hill subdivision. Maple Hill comes off of, uh... No, it's a street that comes off there. Is that Maple?
It's White.
Okay. I don't go that way often. But, uh, the name of the street is Country Lane. It's in Maple Hill. That street's only about five hundred feet long. It's, uh, twenty-foot pavement, asphalt pavement, and, uh, it's in good shape. And, uh, it's owned by Mr. Larry Traylor. There's, uh, six lots in that subdivision. There's five houses in that subdivision. So we got one vacant lot.
Now, what's the next street?
It's called Country Lane.
Country Lane. I'll put that in form of motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second to accept Country Lane. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Can I, can I say something about our street ordinance and everything? Some folks go in and build a street and, uh, they want us to come look at it and naturally tell them it's a great street, you know. That's the best street that's ever been built. Well... I'm an engineer. I'm not, I don't have X-ray vision like Superman, so I can't see what's in there and I don't know what's taking place, so. People that's developing needs to let us know or let the city know and they'll let me, uh, we'll be glad to work with them. We need to approve the drainage in there because, uh, believe it or not, drainage is very important when you're building a road. It's probably the three most important things, is drainage, drainage and drainage. That's what I was told a long time ago. But, but it is important, you know. We get the right size of pipe and look at that, and somebody needs to look at that that, that, uh, knows a little bit about what they're doing and, uh, you wouldn't want me to try to do brain surgery on anybody. I'd kill them right off the bat, but, but we do need to, you know, it's just reasonable to look at it and, uh, uh, we wanna look at the, when you're moving the dirt, we wanna look at that. We wanna look at when you put the base on it and we wanna look at it when you paving it. So there's the steps involved and, uh, we just, uh, I think on behalf of the city, you know, we need to know, uh, what's going on, you know, in, in that aspect, so, uh... I just wanted to share that because, you know, I've had some requests to look at some things and, uh, I can't tell if it's a P M R or if it's a Cadillac, you know.
We want a Cadillac.
Thanks, Sammy Smith. Thanks, Sammy Smith.
I know a little bit about his road.
You know, I've built roads, you know.
It's a land in road.
Right to his house, man.
So about each one of them.
Keep on telling your neighbors it is.
That's all about that.
Lord, uh.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
I got two things, one, Mayor, I want to hire Chris Phillips as the hole, and that's basically as a hole manager if David Hope can't be there, so you're looking at maybe two or three times this year, you know, where.
Okay. Have a motion and a second to hire Chris Phillips as, uh, assistant hole manager, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Well, Chris in my books, I doubt he asked his first name, his might, they like mine, I checked out, mine will be the same, I'll check you. And I wanted to make mention again, did we vote on that? I want to make mention again to Cruz in the park this weekend, I said we'll have two managers and everything Saturday, five o'clock, roughly eight, under what have you? And I said after it's over, RTI just had a movie in the park, and what's the name of that movie?
Luana.
Luana, a big play named a park, so if you guys got children, if you'd like to come watch a good Disney movie, everybody's gonna be on in the park. That's all I've got, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Ross.
Well. Can we take time out?
The first thing I have on my, uh, agenda here is, uh, we, we renegotiated contract with Square Dancers at the Tom Bell Center. Also, we put in there a clause where the city, um, could bump them at least three times in a calendar year for a city event if we, if, if needed. And we changed the rate from seventy-five to sixty-five, because, um, we kind of dwindled them down a little bit, and the Tom Bell were one voters in favor, changed it to sixty-five, and it all passed. So I'll go ahead and put that in form of motion, that we go ahead and renegotiate the contract, uh, sixty-five dollars every Thursday, and we can bump them three times a year if needed.
Thank you.
Is that something I need to sign?
It is.
It is. Put, give the power you want to sign it.
Sign a contract, okay. Have a motion and a second to empower the mayor to, uh, sign the contract with the Square Dancers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The next thing is, uh, Councilman DeHerry asked me to bring those, uh, these next things up, uh, for him in his absence. So the first thing will be, uh, to promote Nick Knox, um, to night sergeant, so I'm gonna put that in form of motion.
I second, as long as you got a good speech. Oh, we're listening. Well, cancel the agreement, I think it'd be a great speech, because he didn't say anything. I know.
And I'll put that in form of motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Congratulations.
And no speech, you didn't have speech.
The next thing. Councilman DeHerry want to bring up would be, uh, promote, uh, Stephen Malone to night sergeant as well. Uh, we'll ask for his speech from you two, put that in form of motion, sorry.
Have a motion and a second to promote Stephen Malone to night sergeant, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The next thing, Mr. DeHerry needed was, uh, change the grant structure from the PV, uh, wants to change it where the detective is above the sergeant, right, Chief?
Correct.
Change the pay scale, where the detective is above the sergeants, the same pay skill, it's just he'll be over.
Flip-flop.
Flip-flop, basically, yeah. So I'll put that in form of motion.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, to, uh, change rate structure in the police department, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The next thing, uh. Put the motion to, I guess make Tim Devlin, uh, the security resource officer.
School resource.
School resource officer, right?
School.
I did it right?
Which will be at.
Which.
Cornerstone.
Yeah.
The Mission Center, and.
Candy Land.
Plainview and the Tech School.
Plainview and the Tech School, all the schools.
Every school.
And Cornerstone is paying for his.
Schools.
Schools.
For that too. This is something we've never done either, so.
This is our area, that's.
This is, uh, we've, we've got a lot of good feedbacks from the police department going into schools, and I think it's important. So I'll put that in form of motion.
I'll second that, if he don't make a speech, shit, we don't.
I have a motion and a second on, uh, Tim Devlin as a resource officer, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Okay, the last thing that I have to bring up is to give the mayor, uh, the authority, uh, to purchase three vehicles for the police department off the state bid, three Tahos.
Thank you.
Put that in form of motion.
Okay, have a motion and a second to purchase three, uh, Tahoe's for the police department. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, I'm gonna say this, I'm like, I think to Harry on this, you know, I'm sure he, he's running the numbers, I think he should have been here.
Yeah.
Because I'd like to heard, you know, it's the same numbers as a Tahoe opposed to Impala or a Crown Vic or a.
Or Doodle Bug.
Tahoe, whatever.
Well, I, I told him, I told him a while back that what I was thinking about doing is buying three Volkswagen straightships.
Right.
Well, I can speak. Will you pay for that, for as far as the Tahoe version of the other cars? The other cars have no resale value at the end of their life.
Yeah, but you gotta look at gas mileage, uh.
Can you ever look at the gas mileage in one of them cars versus a Tahoe?
Impala versus Tahoe, yeah, I looked at.
An Impala, I ain't talking about when you're driving to the beach.
You're talking about some.
Hey, I knew that car, okay, but anyway, I'll vote yes.
Okay.
I just wanted to think, you know, you gotta look at this thing.
Uh, okay, uh. All right, we voted on that, and we finally got all the votes, so, okay.
Do we need to give the authorization to take care of this, the road?
Yes.
Uh, we need to give the mayor authorization to sign on this grant. We're getting some money, did they were paving, we're gonna be dealing somewhere around four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, is that correct?
We're close.
Close. Be close to that, uh, and we'll receive some of this, uh, somewhere around two hundred and forty, fifty thousand dollars back. So, uh, I'd like to make a motion to give him the power of attorney to borrow what he has to have, because once we do that, then we'll turn around and pay the money back with the money that's gonna be coming in.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to empower me to, uh, get the financing of the money, which will actually be, when we receive it back, we'll turn around and pay that right back on it, so. But we have to, in this particular, the way this is happening with the state, we have to fund it all ahead, get everything done, inspected, everything has to be done to spec with them. Then they turn around and pay us off the invoices back, so that's what it's coming.
After you pay the contractor.
Yeah, everything has to be paid in full, and then they will return it and pay us back for it, so, did we vote?
We, yeah, we got a, we got a motion and a second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? How's that?
Mayor, I make a motion, we pay the monthly bills.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pay monthly bills, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, if you want to just play the rest of the night?